Stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning and welcome to our Thursday morning Board of County Commissioner meeting. It is Thursday, April 25th. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Tom's left is Nadine McCarty. She'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Nadine. My right, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning. Morning. Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Egan Shea. Good morning, gentlemen. And good morning to Mr. Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. All right, we will start with, well, before I do that, I'll say again, like I do every time, there's a sign in sheet in the front as well as an agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today. Uh, we'll start with consent action items, Mr. Baltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You have one item to consider today. It's item two A on the agenda and it's vendor claims report for the week ending April 26, 2024. Staff recommends approval. And I see that Misty Edwards is with us here this morning as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baltz. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? All right, public comment. Any public comment on the consent action item? Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the consent action item two A as explained by Mr. Baltz.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve consent action item two A as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Morningstar Design LTD Company. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow. I'm the Community Health Promotion Division Administrator at Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a contract with Morningstar Design Company in the amount of $10,000, which will be funded through our Injury Prevention Contract to design the Safer Communities Montana Toolkit. The contract is from the date signed till June 21st, 2024. Safer Communities Montana advocates for suicide prevention in Lewis and Clark, Broadwater, and Jefferson Counties through collaboration with the firearm and pharmaceutical communities to reduce means access by people at risk. We have representatives from the three county region on the Coalition. We also have support from the local advisory councils and the health departments in those other counties. We have representatives from both the firearm and pharmaceutical communities who are on the committee to help provide perspective and guidance for the work. Safer Communities Montana provides appropriate suicide prevention tools and training to pharmacies, firearm-related businesses, health providers, and community members. The goal is to give tools so individuals can intervene at times when someone might be going through a mental health crisis. In calendar year 2023, 749 gun locks were distributed and 183 deterra packets. Deterra is a drug deactivation tool which individuals can deactivate their prescription pills at home rather than having to go to a pharmacy or somewhere that can get rid of it for them in a safe manner. Um, that is all through two different funding sources that we were able to do that. Um, that also covers a radio campaign, printed advertisements, and printed materials for those businesses. Safer Communities Montana created a toolkit to outline the steps that we have gone through locally so that if other communities in Montana would like to do a similar effort, they can use what we've learned to make their own campaign and group. This funding comes through our Injury Prevention Contract that Commission approved back in the fall and was part of our fiscal year budget. We emailed four different designers to get quotes. Two responded, and we decided to move forward with Morningstar due to their thorough response to the questions we asked in the email. They're great examples of work already done. The reference is listed, and they already had experience with suicide prevention efforts, which requires its own level of experience. The toolkit content has been created, and now we will work with the designer if this contract is approved to make sure it is visually appealing, easy to read and digest, and visually accessible as well. Once finalized, the toolkit will be promoted through emails to statewide partners, coalition efforts, webinars. It will be posted on our Lewis and Clark Public Health website as well as our Safer Communities Montana website. Um, so there will be many ways for other communities to download it, look at it, ask questions. And then if they would like to do something on their own, they are welcome to, which is the goal. Um, we staff recommends approval, and we're here for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Mr. Payne?
Good morning. Um, from your description, it sounds like Lewis and Clark County is taking the lead on um, providing educational materials, and the other counties in the state will benefit from that. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne. Exactly. So the goal is that we, the work we've been doing the past few years, learning, updating, editing along the way. Um, we're hoping that we can share that with other communities, and then they can make it to their own. You know, if they, if they like components, if they don't like components, if they want to take aspects, they can. Um, but they can learn from what we've already learned, so that hopefully it takes a little bit of the time and pressure off of them if they would like to.
So Lewis and Clark County is paying for this, and we're benefiting the rest of the 55 counties. Is that right?
Yeah.
And I think that's very commendable, but I think we need to recognize that we're providing services to people other than our own eh, however many our population is. And recognize that, you know, if other counties are going to use into this, is there some way that we can say, but you're going to have to pay us a dollar or something so we can lower the cost to our taxpayers?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner Payne. So that's something we can look into about paying. Um, we do say that they ask, we ask to get credit. Um, the funding that covered, at least the staff time to cover this was from a grant where the goal was to help promote this statewide, um, which is of course still taxpayer money through the federal, through the grant. Um, so yeah, that's something we could look into about getting some payment from those other counties. Um, that's something we haven't talked about, but we can look into it.
Okay, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions? Great. Uh, we've been doing this for a while.
Yeah.
So this is the latest iteration in the sense. Can you just talk a little bit about it from a general sense? So somebody watching today that this is the first they've heard, some of the things that we've done over the last few years in part, and with our partners, um, to promote, and you, you kind of hit the highlights, you know, the gun locks and working with um, both retailers and pharmacies and others to uh, educate and promote and, and try to help people recognize someone who might be uh, experiencing some challenges. Maybe just a little more about that and some of the things that we've discovered over the last few years.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Safer Communities Montana, we have been able to create memorandums of understanding with different organizations to distribute those gun locks into terror items. So the goal is that wherever people go where they may be in a mental health crisis, that someone can intervene. So of course, we've talked to healthcare providers about how can they talk about these different aspects. But we're also partnering with the schools. We're partnering with Shodair. We're partnering um, amongst the community to say, how, how can we reach people where they are? And we hope to continue to build that program of being able to distribute those gun locks into terror. We also are providing education and those resources at outreach events. So whether it's just general community events or whether it's gun shows, um, we try to go again, meet the community where they are. There's also tip sheets and postcards that are at the pharmacies, at the retailers, posted to people and the people who are working there can see both have education and materials as well. We also have done mailings to our rural areas in Lewis and Clark County, um, talking about how do you save store at home? What does that look like at home? And then go into the website if they have more questions or want a gun lock or deter at home as well. So that was able to be sent out to a lot of our rural areas such as Lincoln, Augusta, Wolf Creek, Marysville, for example. Um, so those are some of the examples. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything further? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve this contract?
Uh, Chairman Hunthausen, I move that we approve the um, the contract um, between Lewis and Clark County and Morningstar Design Limited as presented by Ms. Sandu.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion?
Um, if I may. I, I think it's important to recognize that in my comments about our, this county paying for it, also recognize that this is an issue that reaches across county lines. We all have families that live in, you know, Tudot or Reed Point or Billings. So this is not just about us. It's about our entire community. So when I point out that our taxpayers are paying for this, I think we need to be aware of it, but that doesn't mean it's, doesn't need to be done. And maybe by taking the lead on this, we can encourage some of the other counties to step up and say, this is really important. So I, I appreciate the program, what we're trying to do here, and I support it um, because of, we're, we're part of a bigger family than just Lewis and Clark County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your comments. Anything further?
I think she, I think Commissioner Payne expressed my feeling very well.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to the next item, which is a grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, Community Health Promotion Division Administrator at Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services up to the amount of $250,000. The grant period begins May 1st through December 30th, 2025. The application is due May 9th, so we believe the official start date, of course, will be once the state decides if we are awarded and the contracts are in place. Uh, there is a chance for a no-cost extension for an additional year after that as well. This grant would cover the costs associated to pilot a universal home visiting program. Currently, our home visiting programs are required to serve priority populations, which is defined as families with low income, um, families experiencing homelessness, military families, and other risk factors. The program would test the benefit of offering every new parent a home visitor for one prenatal visit and up to three visits post-birth for the first year. This would be offered to anyone who lives in the St. Peters Health five county region, as we know a lot of those births happen in our county. Um, so though that five county region is Lewis and Clark, Jefferson, Broadwater, Mar, and Powell. In 2021, in those five counties, there was 966 births. If awarded the contract, Lewis and Clark Public Health would hire a universal home visitor who would build relationships with the different OB-GYN offices, hospitals, and birthing centers. If a family needed more support than these four visits, that family could be enrolled in the current home visiting programs that are longer term to help serve those families or other community organizations or partnerships that would be needed. After this contract period, the plan would be to evaluate if this was an effective tool for our families. If so, the plan would be to find additional funding through state, federal grants, and local insurance companies. Staff recommends approval, and we are here for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
Of course I have questions.
Yeah.
When we were in Augusta for our meeting last Friday, um, they were talking about, uh, up there, there has been a home health nurse, and she lives in Augusta, and I understand she, she has health problems now, and she's not going to be able to continue to do this. And so will this be part of, I mean, will it take care of our issues in Augusta to help? And I know they can't entirely replace that nice lady who's been taking care of those folks, but is this a step in that direction?
I would have to find out. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Payne. Um, I would have to find out more about, because sometimes home health helps, um, you know, our homebound or elderly. Um, this would be for new families, so new parents, new babies. So I think it would help Augusta. I think it would help fill a need, you know, anyone. Even if they come birth in Helena, then they go back to Augusta. That's a long drive with a newborn baby if, if you need a new visit or if you need just questions on, you know, how to feed your baby or safe sleep or any of those factors. So I do think it would fill a need in Augusta. I just don't know if it would fill the full need of the person you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Question? I just, a question, wanted to point out, um, I think in your comments, if we were rewarded to approve this and we were awarded this grant ultimately, um, it looks like, uh, the grant period starts May 1, 2024.
Yeah.
However, by the time the money actually comes, it could be a couple of months from now. We don't know exactly when they'll release the dollars. And then you did mention that it goes through December of 2025, which does not align with our budget year.
No.
And it has a renewal factor in there. So I'm just trying to, uh, point out, this is one of these commissioners that could be confusing because we're probably going to get the money well into another budget year. And then if that all goes well and we are allowed to extend the grant, that money could be awarded in the middle of a budget year. So I just want us to be aware that these odd things happen and they're not, they, we have no control over them. This is their offering of this grant, so we have to kind of work with their schedule, correct?
Exactly. Thank you, Commissioner.
I just wanted to point that out. This will be one of those that is, as it comes forward, if we get awarded this, it'll be a little bit confusing with the budget.
Yeah, thanks.
You bet.
Chairman, I, I appreciate, I, as you know, I've got a pretty steep learning curve here.
No, it's
And I'm coming to recognize that there are things beyond your control regarding your budget that you have to, you're trying to do the best you can.
Yeah, I just, thank you. Yes, yes.
And, and it, uh, here's where there's a kind of a competitive process for applying for this grant, so uh, well, we have, uh, folks that are experienced in applying for these grants. No guarantee that we'll get it.
Agreed, Commissioner. We'll do our best shot.
Right, so again, thank you, Commissioner, because that reminds me of something else that we need to think about that.
Yeah.
This is just the authorization to apply for the grant. So if we actually get awarded it, then you'll be back before us to accept the award, and then after we accept it, then it'll be some period of time before they actually release the dollars and we start the programming.
Yeah.
So it, it's a, it's a process. So I just wanted to point that out that it's often confusing, but thank you. Okay, with that, any further questions, Commissioners? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as explained by Ms. Sandow.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the grant application to Montana Department Health and Human Services as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we are on to the next item on the agenda, which is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sapphire Resources Connection. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carrie DeRosa, Human Resources Director with the county. Before you this morning is a contract agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Sapphire Resource Connection to provide the Employee Assistance Program Counseling Services to county employees, spouses, domestic partners, independent children. For the first time since 2014, the fee per visit will increase from $100 to $110. The contract period for this service agreement is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. In July of 2014, we moved away from paying for EAP services on a per employee per month basis to a per-use fee, and which means we only pay for services when employees utilize the benefit. This has resulted in substantial savings over the years without a reduction in the benefit. As noted above, our Employee Assistance Program benefit is accessible to all county employees and their household members and entitles them to four confidential counseling sessions per separate and distinct issue. In addition, Sapphire Resource Connection has been really good about reaching out to local providers so that our employees have multiple reputable options in the Helena area and beyond to choose from. Our EAP program also includes access to an unlimited number of um, 30-minute legal and financial sessions, a toll-free crisis line, and online newsletters and other health resources. Staff recommends approval of the contract with Sapphire Resource Connection for Employee Assistance Program Counseling Services through June 30th, 2027.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. How about questions, Commissioners?
I have a question. So if I decide that I need um some counseling, and you know, things are, I keep asking these questions and everybody else knows it, and it's getting me all. Well, anyway, how would I avail myself of this? Do I come and see you, or do I find it on the website, or?
So we provide it to all new employees in orientation packets. We also have it on our internet page. Um, employees can call us for the information. We often email the flyer and the information. We provide it in our open enrollment materials each year. Um, and then we provide resources to the department so they can, um, make them available to employees if they ask for them. So you don't have to call us if you don't want anyone to know that you're asking about the services, but you certainly can. We're one option.
Okay, so I could come in?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you. That's very helpful.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I just wanted to point out one thing that you, you brought up in the transition to doing it per visitor, per use versus paying monthly for every employee. And it has been a significant savings. I just really appreciate that. And looking at this every year and trying to make sure that as we renew these agreements that we're looking at the best deal for not only our taxpayers but for our employees. So I just appreciate you looking out for all of us that way and working around this important program.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, and I, I looked back, um, going back to fiscal year 18 to, through 2023, what we would have paid at the rates that we were paying back in fiscal year 13 before we switched over. And in that six-year timeframe, we would have saved, if we would have maintained the rates from fiscal year 13, um, over $31,000 to that point. So it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it very much. All right, with no further questions, how about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sapphire Resource Connection as explained by Mr. Roger.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion? Again, just thank you. Appreciate it. Send your staff. All right, Commissioners, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is an elections update. Good morning. And for those that are watching, we're just trying to, uh, give updates about how the process works, where we are in the process, and, uh, all of the, not all, but many of the ins and outs about how it works. So thank you for doing this. I know you both are very busy and have a lot on your plate. So thanks for spending a few minutes with us and those that might be watching today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Amy Reeves. I'm the Lewis and Clark County Treasurer, Clerk Recorder, and Election Administrator. I have Connor Fitzpatrick with me today. He's our election supervisor. And I'm just going to do a quick overview, and then I'll turn it over to Connor to give you some more specifics about the process. But we are at the, um, point of our school election, which is in May. It's May 7th, the first Tuesday. We, this is an all-male ballot election. We have the Helena School District that has five different levies on their ballot. We have the East Helena District. They, the school district, they have a levy and a trustee. We also have the Canyon Creek Fire and the Tri Lakes Fire on our ballots this year. Excuse me. Lincoln and Augusta School Districts are holding their own elections. So if you are in the Lincoln area or the Augusta School District area, they are also holding a mail ballot election, but it is through that school district. So those ballots need to be returned to those schools, not to our office. Um, the other thing we like to tell everyone is that to get their ballot to us in time, please get it in the mail at least seven days before the election. And again, it's May 7th, so they want to mail that the end of April. Otherwise, they need to hand-deliver that ballot to make sure we receive it in time. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is we are also preparing for our June election. The primary is coming up on June 4th. This is a federal election. It's also a presidential election this year. So we'll be very, very busy with both. Um, those are going to be, an absentee ballot will be mailed out, not a mail ballot election. This is a polling place election for the primary. So if you are an absentee voter, those ballots will be mailed out May 10th. So that's only three days after the school election. But we do encourage everyone to come in and vote. There is, um, some processes if you are a late registrant, and I'm going to let Connor talk about those types of things. Thank you.
Chair Commissioners, uh, Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections Division Supervisor. Uh, late registration kicks off for every single election about 30 days prior to election day itself. Uh, late registration is kind of a funky thing compared to regular registration. Regular registration, you can mail in your, uh, registration update, drop it by in person, uh, heck, even email it to us. During late registration, though, uh, you can continue to do those things, but you're going to get a letter from us saying, hey, because we're in late registration, you have to pick up your ballot in person. Uh, this mechanism comes into play because, especially during a polling place election, uh, we are getting the registers together, ready to go, and we print those the weekend right before the polling place, uh, election day. And then any supplemental registers are printed on Monday for folks that come in and continue to do late registration. Uh, it's a little less, uh, particular for a mail ballot election, but, uh, the rules still apply nonetheless. So if you need to do an update, uh, talking to the public at this point in time, if you need to do an update, drop by our office in person, uh, as soon as possible. We can get you a school ballot for the pertinent school district that you are, uh, going to be registered to vote in. Uh, right there, you can vote it, drop it off in our office, or you can take it home with you, kind of ponder it a little bit as well. Uh, but then you'll be good to go for the primary election. Uh, primary election late registration starts on May 7th, which is indeed the school election day. So they are about as close as they can be this year, uh, meaning that, uh, my staff and I are absolutely bonkers busy. Uh, my voicemail box is full. I apologize to anyone trying to get ahold of me, uh, both county, city, uh, and out in the public as well. Um, and then my email inbox is insane as well. So, um, here for any questions? I apologize for anyone who's been trying to get ahold of me. Please continue trying. I will get back to you as soon as I can. Uh, employees included, county, uh, Commissioners included. And if you have any questions, we're here.
Thank you very much.
And I'd just like to add a couple other things. We have our public test. That is when we run the tabulators um, for the school election. That will be the Friday before. Um, we always hold it the Friday before the election. So at nine o'clock in the morning, we're in the basement. You can always come in, check in our, um, at our elections department. They will put you in the right direction to come down and witness that public test. With the, um, opening of the ballots normally is the Thursday before election, but with the school election, we had purchased a letter opener years ago that, um, has, does not destroy what's in the envelope, so it can't touch the ballots. So we were able to actually start Friday morning on the school election. Monday, we are a large county, so we're allowed to do early count. So we'll have early count and absentee opening on Monday. Those types of things are open to observers. And then on election day, we are also open. We generally start early in the morning. I'm not sure exactly our times yet. I think the school election, we usually start around eight o'clock. Usually the office is buzzing at 6:00 AM on the primary election. But this year, we may be stopping at some of those polling places on our way in. So it may be a little bit later. We'll be, um, as we get closer, we'll know. Normally between the school and the primary election, we have X number of days. It's all driven off of the MCAs and the calendars and how many days before the election. Last year, we had 36 days between this school election and the primary. This, this year, we have 28 days. So we are about a week short. So we are, we are working long hours, and Connor in his office has been working some weekends too to try to make up for that time. But with that crunch, some of our normal procedures are having to be shifted just a little bit. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that, um, the observation is available. They come in, they sign up. Um, and we do encourage people to come in if they're interested in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Rolfe?
Just, uh, just a comment. I, I really appreciate the thoroughness that you're going through. And, uh, we've been involved in some conversations with people that had questions and time you've taken to try to resolve those questions and, and, and in some cases have, have found that there may be some things that need to be corrected and been taken care of. I really appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ralph. Yes, absolutely. Happy to do that. It's one of the reasons I got involved in the job was. I felt like I could put my knowledge to use. I'm a political science and history nerd, so both apologetically and unapologetically. And more than happy to continue and engage with members of the public that are interested in all of this. And every system that is created by people is not necessarily perfect because people are not perfect. So always happy to hear ideas for making the system better. Really kind of in the vein of a legislature, legislator in that sense. Because at the end of the day, if the idea bears fruit, heck, it works for all of us and makes the whole system better and helps us all move forward.
Yeah, thank you for your, thank you for your conscientious attitude and, and for working with people that have questions and. And I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Payne?
I, this is more of a comment than a question. I had. Yesterday, there were. They were using our chambers. Did you know that? We had non, well, anyway. Connor was here. Giving lessons on. How this election works and what. And these are people who are going to work at the elections and he was educating them. And I ran into a former Commissioner McCormick was here. He is one of them. And then another personal friend of mine that I went and had lunch with, and she said, I had no idea. It was that complicated. And she was very. Appreciative of the efforts and, and at your. Sense of humor approach to some of this stuff that gets pretty heavy, but. According to people who sat through, and I understand you did three different sessions and there were. There's one tomorrow, one today?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, I've done three different sessions so far. We'll have two more. I stopped by, did one at Carroll for a few students. And then we had a elections judge training session yesterday and then on one the day before. Both of those were full house, standing room only, sold out show, so to speak, considering my sense of humor. Not quite stand-up comedy, but at the same time, very informal or informative rather than informal. So. Yeah, that was well attended.
And it kept people awake.
Yes.
It's an important thing as a speaker. And your efforts are appreciated and it encourages people to participate in the elections and to help. Negate the assertions that there may be some. Something nefarious going on with our elections. You people work very hard and the fact the public comes in and helps us. It, I'm so proud of you all.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, thank you. I think a lot of that comes from Montana's history. Prior to when Senate seats were elected by the people. Senate seats across the country were chosen by the state legislators. And the copper kings out of Anaconda and Butte respectively, but actually buy those Senate seats just unabashedly dropping cash on the table in front of people. And a group of citizens got together, similar things were happening in other states, got together, decided, hey, that's not cool. So then, of course, senators are now elected by the popular vote. And then also a lot of the other shady things that the copper kings had tried to do in Montana specifically. Then became the fodder for new laws to prevent those kind of things. So while I am a Lewis and Clark County native and my home state is my favorite state. Montana also, because of its history, has, I feel very, very robust elections laws. Though of course, as the times change and technology evolves and all of that continues. We need to continue to stay abreast of that and which is where the ideas side of things come in. As I was talking with Commissioner Rolf, so always appreciate hearing from the community, what ideas they may have. My poli sci background, I can come in and take a look at it. Okay, political theory wise, which is a class I never thought I'd use. You can take a look at it and go, okay, well, how could this pan out in a larger sense? But then also with the direct experience I have running elections as the election supervisor, something they don't teach you in college, I promise you that. We can also look at it from the ground and go, okay, does this make sense on our side from this perspective as well? So appreciate it, Commissioner. Thank you. Also appreciate all the folks who came by. I think we're looking at about two hundred and fifty people, if my math is right. Could use a few more always. This is more a pitch to the public at this point. Now, we need, we had about three hundred and fifty judges in the two thousand twenty-two election. Thinking we might need about four hundred this year because of it's a presidential election. There's going to be a lot more people interested in voting. A lot more ballots coming back to our office that we're going to have to process. So there's still room for the Saturday, April twenty-seventh session and the May first session. There's going to be a, I believe John Embary had mentioned it was going to run tonight. We're going to do, we did a. Brief report on that yesterday after yesterday's training and still could use more people, always could use more people. If you're interested, contact my office, four oh six, four four seven, eight three three nine. That's not my phone number because my voicemail box is full. We'll get you signed up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to put a shout out to all our staff, our temporary staff that comes in during the election processes. And again, all those people that come in and want to be an election judge and help us with this process. It is not something one person can do by themselves. It's not something twenty people can do by themselves. This is very tedious. It's very. Precise. We try to keep everything. Flowing through the process. We're doing multiple counts. We're continually auditing every step of the way to make sure that not one envelope. Or ballot gets misplaced. So it's very long, very tedious and needs to have extreme accuracy. So we do appreciate all of our staff, temporary staff and our. I would say volunteers, election judges coming in and helping us with this. And the only last thing I wanted to mention is this year we have, in our primary, Montana is an open primary. So people will get three ballots. With their primary, if they are an absentee voter or if they go to the polls, they'll receive three ballots because we have three parties on our. Election this time, we have the Democratic, the Green Party and the Republican. You get those ballots. It's not up to our office to know which party you want to vote. So you take that in secrecy. You're able to vote which ballot you want. The ballot that you choose to vote gets placed in the secrecy envelope. The other two ballots, if you're an absentee voter, can be discarded. Or if you're at the polling place, there is a place that the judges will have you put those two ballots that you choose not to vote. I just want to put that out there because we did have some confusion two years ago and people were unsure why they were getting three ballots. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions or comments you have? Anyone over here have questions, comments, things to add? All right. Well, I would like to tack on to what Commissioner Payne said, just to. I feel a lot of pride and appreciation for you and all of the. Staff and please share that with them from us because we recognize, even though we pass by and say, howdy and. Know you're working hard, but we really do understand how hard this. Time is and how much work that you're putting in and all the folks in your office is putting in. As well as the, the temporary folks that we bring in to help the election. So. Much appreciation and thank you for explaining. A little more about it and how it works and keeping expressed on, on. How things are going as well. Mr. Fitzpatrick, your willingness to talk with the public and work with the public on any questions they may have. Glad we're doing this. We had a couple of weeks ago, we had some folks here making comment, you know, asking about how the election's going and. Is there an update? And so that's when we invited you to come today. And so we really appreciate you doing that and. Hopeful that there's public out there watching or they'll watch one of the reruns. We get run several times during the week. So. Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
If I can add one more thing, Commissioner, Chair Commissioners, if you run into folks like that, whether it's at a public meeting here or in the hall. Send them our way. More than happy to talk to them. If it's out in the community, send them our way. I am bringing a sense of patience because even though I get asked the same hundred questions a thousand times by a thousand different people. It's the first time they're asking that question or one of the first times they're asking that question. Sometimes I need to re-explain myself to be a little bit more clear. Cut through some previous assumptions that I've already made about what they may already know and start from the ground level. But. Once we understand where everybody's at, start answering the questions, I find that most people walk away going, okay, no, that makes sense now. And whether they come back with further questions is of course a whole other question in itself, but always more than happy to talk to them, send them my way.
Well, I have to tell you, in my case, that's the first thing I do. I did not claim to be an expert in this, but I know that we have experts. So. Try to send them your way and make sure that they've talked to you first or. I can answer any questions for them. So wonderful. Thank you for that. Anything further, Commissioners? We so appreciate it. Thank you, Treasurer Clerk and Recorder Reeves for being here. Mr. Fitzpatrick, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So non-action item, just an update and appreciate that. Any public comment on this, though? Any public comment? Any public comment? There's no public coming forward, so we will move on. Mr. Balt, we're going to talk about board appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is item seven on the agenda for you today. There are five different. Actions for you to consider today. I know you have the memo. I'll read it into the record for you. For you to consider taking distinct actions as, as we've done in the past. So Commissioners, these candidates meet the qualifications for consideration of each board that you're about to consider. The first one is the Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board. Jen Veeth resigned with a term to expire. June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, and the position has been vacant since. Roger Day applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider Roger Day for the position on the Heritage Preservation and Tourism Board. To complete the vacant term that expires June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Balt. Questions, Commissioners? Just to point this out that the term will end. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. So Mr. Day would have to come back for another appointment at that time if, if. Commission so chose to do so. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. Just want to make sure we understand this short term. All right. Any questions, Commissioners, on this one? Any public comment on this? Proposed appointment? Any public comment? Please, yes.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Pam Matardo. I'm the Heritage Preservation Officer and I'm staff for the Heritage Tourism Council. And I just wanted to let you know that my interactions with Roger, I've known him since about two thousand seven, two thousand eight. He's a. Wonderful photographer. He's the co-owner of the Blackfoot Valley Dispatch paper with his wife Erin Day. She also owns Rusty Relics. It's located in the same building as the newspaper. He and Erin have been involved with the Upper Blackfoot Valley Historical Society for a number of years. They were responsible for moving the Matt King Ranch House into the center of Lincoln after the entire. Matt King Ranch was deconstructed and brought to Bozeman to be sold for salvage logs in new homes. And he and Erin are still in the process of restoring that building. He was also, has been involved in covering the Lincoln Cemetery work that we've been doing, the restoration on the grave fences. And he's very committed to the town of Lincoln and Lewis and Clark County. And I think he would make a great contribution to the Heritage Tourism Council. And this will be. It has been over twenty years since we last had a Lincoln representative. So this is quite a milestone for us to get somebody again. Susan Hausman was. Coincidentally, also owner of the Blackfoot Valley Dispatch. And so he will be the second person. In over twenty years to be here from Lincoln. If you so choose to approve him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Roger Day for the Heritage Preservation Tourism Board.
Second?
Moved in second to appoint, correct?
Appoint.
Appoint Roger Day to the Heritage Preservation Tourism Board through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Comments, Commissioners? Any further comment?
Just Roger's been a fountain of information for us. For the commission when we have meetings up there, I think it looks like an excellent choice.
I would agree.
Yeah, I concur. That's, we're lucky to have him.
We are. He participates on the Lincoln Community Council as well, the Upper Blackfoot Community Council. And I know he's very. Active, participating in the sewer district board meetings up there and everything else that comes to Lincoln. So. Appreciate his volunteerism. And I'm happy to support this motion. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next. Next one is Human Services Task Force, Mr. Balt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Human Service Task Force is next. As you just said, Sherry Downing termed out. Cheyenne Loney applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider Cheyenne Loney for the position. On the Human Services Task Force to a term that expires June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that. We approve the appointment of. Cheyenne Loney as the. For the Human Services Task Force.
Second.
Term that ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second. Moved in second to approve Cheyenne Loney as the. Appointee to the Human Services Task Force as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, Investment Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you just said, the Investment Committee, William Rust, completed a partial term that expired December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. He wishes to be reconsidered. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider. William Rust for the position on the Investment Committee to a full first term that expires December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? And any public comment on this proposed appointment? Any public comment? Hearing none? Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we appoint William Rust. To a term that, a full, first full term. A full first term that expires December eleventh, two thousand twenty-six.
You mean December thirty-first.
Two thousand and twenty-six, December thirty-first, right, okay.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the appointment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Next one is Lincoln Solid Waste Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you just stated, for the Lincoln Solid Waste Board, Crystal Hout. Completed a partial term that expired June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. She wishes to be reconsidered. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider Crystal Hout for the position on the Lincoln Solid Waste Board to a full first term. That expires June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Please.
I, I work with the Augusta Solid Waste Board, so I don't know as much about this one. But so there's no, been no one in this seat since June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two? Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners?
Please.
She has continued to be there. She just, for whatever reason, we never were able to get it in writing that she wanted to be reconsidered. But she has been attending the meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Nadine.
Yeah, it's been an oversight. She has been at the meetings and I have been at those meetings as well. And she participates well, does a good job.
Okay.
But thanks for the question because this will right the ship in a sense, this action, if we take it.
These are important positions.
Got to make sure that we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is. So this is one of those that needs to be done. Okay, public comment on this item? Other public comment on this item? Public comment? Hearing none? Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Crystal Hout. To the Lincoln Solid Waste Board for a term to be. Completed June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Moved in second to approve the appointment as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Noxious Weeds is next. Mr. Balt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Lewis, East Helena Valley Representative, termed out. Shelley Holland, applied. Action staff recommends the Commissioners consider Shelley. Action staff recommends the Commissioners consider Shelley Holland for the position on the Noxious Weed District Board as the East Helena Valley Representative to a term that expires December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Okay.
Um, I'll comment. I sit on this board and um I don't always see eye to eye with Dave Lewis and his position on weeds. Uh, however, he will be missed and uh I'm glad that we have someone willing to take over that seat.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to appoint Shelley Holland uh to the Noxious Weed District Board as the East Helena Valley Representative for a term that expired December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Moved in second to appoint Shelley Holland as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Balt, anything else on that one? All right, uh, we're at that time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any item that's under the jurisdiction of the Commission but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.